Sorry guys, I'm having trouble sharing my screen. Okay. Good evening, I'd like to call the June 4th, 2020 North Hills Board of Education Committee Meeting with Action to Order. I'd like to ask everybody to please rise for a moment of silence and salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the June 4th, 2020 North Hills Board of Education Committee Meeting with Action. I'd like to begin by doing a roll call for attendance. Ms. Cozera?
Here.
Mr. Little?
Here.
Dr. Knowlish?
Here.
Ms. Philpott?
Here.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Here.
Mrs. Reed?
Here.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Here.
Mrs. Spade?
Here.
Mr. Witherall?
Here.
Dr. Manorino?
Here.
Dr. Williams?
Here.
Mrs. Matthew? Here. Mr. Muth?
Here.
Mrs. Pellet?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Ms. Fleischer?
Here.
Ms. Shulley? I don't know if Ms. Shulley is here.
Here, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Mrs. Rieger?
Here.
And I am also present. I'd like to note that the board held an executive session on Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020, to discuss personnel and legal matters. And before I open it up to board member comments this evening, I would like to read a joint statement on behalf of the North Hills School District Board of Education and the superintendent. "Over the past week, our nation and community have been grappling with the tragic death of George Floyd and other similar incidents of racism. There is a lot of pain, anxiety, hurt, and fear. The path forward requires open and honest conversations. North Hills is committed to being a part, to being part of a larger systematic change to confront racism and inequality of any type within our neighborhoods and community, but especially in education. As a district, we stand in solidarity against any and all acts of racism, disrespect, and inequitable treatment of persons of color. As such, we are committed to confronting racism to create a more inclusive and just world. We acknowledge that this is a journey. This is not a one-time statement, but an ongoing conversation and the beginning of making changes as we all work together to tackle these issues. As such, North Hills will be: creating a diverse task force to address these issues, ensuring that we include and center the voices of groups who have faced marginalization; publishing a list of anti-racism references and resources for our families; continuing to review all our policies and guidelines, including our use of force policy; identifying achievement gaps and coming up with action plans to close them; encouraging potential teachers, administration, and all of those interested in education to apply to North Hills as a start in creating a more diverse personnel; partnering with community groups, families, and leaders that represent the racial, ethnic, and cultural diversity in our district; and partnering, partnering with HBCUs to gain a better understanding of needs and goals for both North Hills students and representatives of HBCUs. Know that we are committed to learning, growing, and making the changes necessary to fight prejudice, racism, and inequality. We will learn how to do better so that we can all do what we do best, teach and educate our future leaders." I'll now ask at this time if any other board members have any comments that they would like to make.
I've got to raise my hand, huh?
No, you are not muted, so you can go ahead, Mrs. Reed.
Okay. I've been debating on whether to say this or not, but I figured the time is right. I believe that there are some people that are concerned that I don't attend all the meetings. And with the HEPA law, I know a lot of the board members won't even tell, tell somebody I'm sick, and I appreciate that. But I wanted the constituents to know that I attend all the meetings I can get to. There were times I wasn't there, but I was either in the hospital or in manor care. And this has been a rough year. I've had my toe amputated, and that's not going well, and other things. I don't want to get into it. But I, I do attend everything I can attend. The only problem I'm having is getting to interviews because they're early in the morning. So those that are concerned, please know that I'm doing everything I can, and I want to remain on the board. I mean, to me, I bring the history to the board. I've been on the board, and I've held so many positions in the district. I know most of the employees and the way we've done things. I did hear a couple remarks saying that I'm not there for the students. I want you to know that the first year I was on the board, they decided they were cutting Elementary Student Council. You have no idea. You can ask Dr. Manorino how I carried on, and I did it all publicly, not behind closed doors in executive session. Finally, he said he couldn't stand me any longer, and they reinstated the Elementary Student Council, which I thought, that is the heart of each elementary school. Why would they cut that? So I'm always there fighting for the kids, and there's been many other things, but that's the one that comes to my mind. And I'm sorry if you think that I'm not doing my due diligence, but I'm trying. And you have to hear parents. I, I couldn't get dressed today. It was a bad day.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Reed. Are there any other board, any other board members with comments?
Yes, I would like to say something. I would just like to add to the joint statement, you know, I, you know, I went to North Hills, and in the 20 years since I graduated from North Hills, left and went to Penn, left and went to Penn State, left and lived in DC for a while and came back, it's, the community has remained the same. I think that it is time for us to really prioritize diversity and racial justice. So, you know, I remember going to college in my first sociology class where I learned about privilege that I held and all of that. And so I know that for a lot of people in our community, you're probably in that same position. And so I just want to say that if you are at the beginning of your education to understanding racial justice, I encourage you to Google and read "White Privilege: Unpacking the Invisible Knapsack" by Peggy McIntosh. It's the first thing that anybody reads in a sociology class on race. I also encourage all of our white parents and guardians to start talking with your children about race and racism. I promise that they are not too young. If you need help, Sesame Street and CNN are holding a town hall on racism on Saturday at 10 o'clock. And the website embracerace.org has webinars, one of which is tomorrow night. For parents, they also have articles and lists of children's books if you're trying to diversify your children's library. And if you are ready to jump in, I am currently making my way through a list called "75 Things White People Can Do for Racial Justice." You can Google it and join me. And you could also join the YWCA of Greater Pittsburgh on their webinar tomorrow at noon. It's called "A Conversation on Racial Justice," and you can just, you can find that on their website. Specifically, in terms of police reform to decrease police violence. Today, Mayor Paduto released his police reform agenda for Pittsburgh. He is pledging to, number one, review the police use of force policy; number two, engage the city by including a diverse range of input, experiences, and stories in the review; number three, report the findings to the community and seek feedback; and number four, then reform the use of force policy based on the findings. And if you're interested in following along on that, the use of force policy for the city of Pittsburgh is on their website for the public to read. Mayor Paduto is also committing today to requiring de-escalation and implicit bias training annually, and committing to the "Eight Can't Wait" platform, which details eight specific items that police departments should follow. You can find these at eightcan'twait.org, but they include things like banning chokeholds and strangleholds and banning shooting at moving cars. And so I have begun a conversation with the Ross Township Chief of Police about these items for our township, that, for Ross, which is where I live. And I also look forward to discussing them in depth as a board, as, as the items, if they relate to our school police. So I'm very excited to, to, that we're going to, as the districts are tackling this.
Do we have any other board member comments at this time?
Um, I have, I'd just like to say, we, we picked up our things from Ross Elementary today, and I, it sounds like, from generally speaking, all of the pickups went really well. We had a really pleasant experience. I mean, we were all crying, but, you know, it's, it's, it's been really tough to go back to the schools after two and a half months away. So I really appreciate, you know, it was really nice to see Mr. Beal and Officer Much, and, and let the girls, you know, see their lockers in their schools for the last time this year. So we're lucky that we will be, both my kids will be attending Ross again next year. So, so we didn't have to say goodbye because there would have been a lot of crying, and I know that's the case for certainly some members on the board in addition to many other parents. So thanks for making it as, as nice as it possibly could be, I guess. And, you know, it went off without a hitch. So I just wanted to mention that. Thanks to everybody involved in that.
Thank you. Are there any other board member comments at this time? Okay, then I will ask if we have any members of the public who would make, who would like to make public comments on agenda items only, please indicate that by raising your hand at this time. I'll give you guys a minute to find the raise hand button. I always feel like we need hold music here. It doesn't look like anybody has any questions at this time, but of course, there'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. So then I would like to move on to our student representatives, Ellie Fleischer and Hannah Shulley, and ask if you have a report for us this evening.
Um, yeah, we do. So we just wanted to talk about how the high schools, like, drop-off of books went. So our juniors was on Tuesday, and I went, and I really liked, it was so nice to go back to school. I think I really liked how we did that, and it was just like a nice end to our year. And then I took my sister today for a freshman drop-off, and she, we timed it so like her and her friend were at the same time, so they got to see each other, and it was just really nice. I think it was a nice close on our year.
Yeah, I agree. Not only that, but towards the end of the year, a lot of teachers held, like, end-of-the-year Zooms. Like, one of my AP English teachers did one, and it was just really nice to just see your classmates and just talk to the teacher for kind of like the last time of the year, obviously, before things, you know, hit like the summer route, but it was really nice. So we just wanted to thank everyone who was involved in this, like, school year with just the change of things. And then, of course, the school dropout for everything, though it went really well.
Thank you both so much. I hope you have a great summer, and I appreciate all of the time that you guys have given to serving as student representatives on the board this year, and I look forward to working with you next year, too.
Of course, thank you.
You're welcome. Dr. Manorino, I will now move on to you and the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to quickly thank all of our graduating seniors and their families for attending Saturday's commencement. It was a great day, and I'm so glad that we were able to celebrate the accomplishments of our senior class with their families by their side. Congratulations and best wishes to all from our class of 2020. And now, looking forward to next school year, the Pennsylvania Department of Education announced yesterday that schools can reopen for face-to-face instruction as long as a plan is in place to ensure the health and safety of the students and staff. To develop that plan, I have formed a reopening planning committee made up of teachers, administrators, and school board members, and our first meeting is actually on Monday. Together, we will build instructional models for reopening in all phases as defined by the governor. We will have a red phase, a yellow, a green, and a no restrictions plan in the event that our governor moves us in and out of these phases. And this will allow us to adopt a hybrid or virtual learning model as necessary. We are also going to explore different calendar options that would get us in school earlier than our current August 25th start date. The thinking behind this is to get our students into our buildings and in front of their teachers for not only the high-quality instruction that they are accustomed to in the classroom, but to give them the most possible time with their teachers in the event that a COVID-19 case spike occurs in the fall or the winter. And we are moved into different phases by our governor once again. This committee will also focus on items that the Pennsylvania Department of Education asks us to include in our reopening plan, such as identifying a pandemic coordinator, how we are going to monitor students and staff for symptoms, guidelines for hygiene practices, processes for cleaning and disinfecting, guidelines for wearing face masks, social distancing protocols, and what constitutes a large gathering. Although this committee will be focused on the district's needs, I have been, and I will continue to work with Northern Area Superintendents and other superintendents in Allegheny County's Intermediate Unit as we identify and solve the challenges that this crisis has put before all of us. Finally, we plan to survey families on their comfort level of reopening, particularly in regard to in-person instruction, virtual instruction, and transportation. We need to ensure that we are doing all we can to meet the learning and safety needs of our students and their parents. And then, of course, we will share details with you as soon as we have a better understanding of the direction we will take for the 2021 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Manorino. Next, we have Support Services and Ms. Philpott.
Okay. First, tonight, we have our annual presentation from Ms. Lindsay Radzin, our Director of Food Services.
Good evening, everyone. Hi again, and it's nice to see some familiar faces. I haven't seen many of you in quite some time. I hope everyone is doing well. Pat and Jerry asked me to spend just really a few minutes this evening to talk about what our year looked like in the Food Service Department, and obviously, it was very, very different than normal. It's certainly been an interesting one, filled with many challenges. So we do have some data, and I will share that with you. Okay, so to start off this evening, I kind of wanted to just give you a quick summary of what our pre-COVID numbers looked like financially. We were, we were very well positioned prior to COVID to have a very strong year financially. You can see our daily meal participation numbers across the district. Looking at January of last year versus January of this year, we were up 7% in breakfast participation, plus 35 breakfast per day across the district. Lunch is up 40 per day, which was 2%. February looked very similar, up 7% for breakfast and 2% for lunch. Okay, so COVID feeding at Westview, I know many of our school board members were very involved and assisted in many ways, including transporting meals to the homes of our families, which, thank you very much. It was a unique and wonderful experience in many ways. Many of you know the, the three food service employees that were really on the front lines from the start, Cindy Hill, Lori Marks, and Kelly Patron. And I just have to say, you know, publicly, they, they were there every day from the beginning when there were a lot of uncertainties, and there were, it was, it was a scary, very scary time, and never had a complaint from them. They, they just, they did their job, and they took a lot of pride in taking care of the community. So I just wanted to, you know, mention them, and Nancy Ferris as well, who was very helpful throughout. Um, so you can see our numbers, what, what, who, the numbers we fed every day kind of increased with each subsequent month. March, we fed an average of 119, April 159, May 203. Our federal and state reimbursements we're getting are right in the ballpark of $50,000. So it will help us financially, but obviously, nowhere even close to what we would normally receive in the way of subsidies during the normal school year. So you may have heard this in the news. There's been a lot of talk, school meal programs are really struggling financially. So I just wanted to mention, there are normal financial, not, this year will not look like what, what it normally looks like for us, but we will not have to have a general fund transfer to the Food Service Fund. So that's kind of the bottom line on that. And just to share some other positive news, we are not going to have a price increase this year. So our breakfast will remain at 150, lunch at 250, morning care at 350. And this is for, we're holding the line on pricing for the ninth consecutive year, which is pretty remarkable, I think. Okay, so just a few bullets on the Wellness Committee, some of the things that we accomplished this year. We initiated a student hydration survey that was evaluated by our elementary faculty. We began some discussion on staff wellness initiatives. We were able to implement quite a lot of sustainable items this school year, including compostable trays and paper straws, and we are continuing our discussion on further changes to make, continue to make the Food Service Department greener and reduce our carbon footprint. We revised some information in the way of snacks to create more transparency for parents, and we discussed ways for our students to, to stay active during recess. Okay, so, and finally, in conclusion tonight, just again, adding to what Dr. Manorino said, we, what we are thinking about, people in my position, and kind of preparing for in the fall, we, we really don't know what it's going to look like from the distribution level. You know, we know there's going to be some challenges, you know, getting prepared for more prepackaged items, more individually wrapped items. I think we're going to see a lot more grab-and-go options, probably similar to how we have been feeding at Westview the last few months. We're looking at preorder options from the iPad using the Google Form in the morning. For sure, I think in the elementary schools, maybe even the middle school, something, again, we're thinking about. We are talking about classroom delivery options and what that may look like. And also, of course, of course, increased cleaning and sanitation from all of our staff. And one last thing in conclusion, we, we do have, we had been planning pretty much all year for some fairly significant improvements to the middle school serving lines and the Westview serving lines. That is still going to happen, but the timeline on that is sort of delayed. Just again, not knowing what the fall will look like and some of the disruption to our contractors and so forth, but it is still going to happen, but just probably not for the start of the school year. Are there any questions?
I have a couple. Okay, um, so the first thing, and with our meals that we were passing out in Westview, if we, if we do at some point next year end up in that same sort of situation where we're providing pickup meals for, for students, and, you know, I think a lot of families didn't go get them, even if they wanted to, because of, you know, wanting to leave them for people who really needed them. However, things I've been reading say that we should be encouraging all families in the district to go because it did help increase federal reimbursements. Is that right for our district? So if this happens again, does it help us for more families to go get meals?
It does, definitely. So you saw the kind of increase toward, we saw an increase toward the end of April into May because we did share, all families are welcome to take advantage of the meals. And you're right, so initially, it was a reimbursement issue. So we, and then it was eventually, as I think you are aware, the governor kind of passed legislation to say that, you know, all, all students, any, any child under the age of 18 is welcome to a meal for free. So perhaps it was just, you know, we, we did kind of change the way it was sort of promoted at that time.
But the more people that came to get them, the more reimbursements we got. And so all families, if this happens again, should go get meals if they want to, right? Because it helps us?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that all families hear that, because I know, you know, there are definitely families out there who felt like they should, they should not take advantage of that if they didn't need to. But, um, but, so it's, I think it's good to know that that actually helps us if you go pick up those meals. And another question is that you mentioned doing updates to our website on, with like the snacks. Is that live? And where can families go see that if it, if it is already?
That is, that is live. That should be, yes, that is under the Food Service portion. Oh, I don't know what the subtitle is off the top of my head.
Okay, so that's all the information on the à la carte stuff that we offer? Okay.
Yeah, it's under parents.
It's under parents?
Yep.
Okay. And then I have two questions out next year, which I know that we are still, we have no idea what it's going to look like. But I didn't know if you wanted to talk about this for a minute, but we, this winter, you know, we participated in the Harvest of the Month pilot. So, um, and I know that, so it was a program run by the Department of Ed, and our district was chosen to participate. We were one of the three districts chosen to participate in the pilot. And from what I'm hearing, Lindsay, they, they think you did a great job. And, but they are, they are planning to continue the program however possible next year. So basically, Harvest of the Month is encouraging all districts to purchase and prepare local ingredients, local meaning in Pennsylvania or within a certain mileage of your district, if you are, you know, a border district. So I don't know, Lindsay, has there been talks in the food service world in Pennsylvania about how we might be able to continue Harvest of the Month? Or have you thought about how we might be able to do that at our district?
Um, yeah, absolutely. So I'm actually presenting in another webinar next week and just kind of waiting for the schedule that they release. And then, you know, working with our produce supplier and getting it lined up. We, we did participate in the pilot study, and it was very, very, very well received. I think, I think it was great. It was, you know, a positive experience. It was nice to promote local produce, and I think kids, our students really enjoyed learning and, you know, trying new, testing new fruits and vegetables.
Yeah.
For sure, we are planning to continue that, though.
My last question is, again, one of those that we have no idea what next year's going to look like, I know. But I've heard from some parents that they'd like to see us focusing on providing more daily options for kids with allergies. So some gluten-free kids, peanut-free kids. And so I know as we, as we move to things more like prepackaged, maybe that's something that we can consider. You know, I know that an option instead of those Uncrustables, as we serve them, are also, you know, you can get them with sunflower butter. So I don't know if we, if we offer those daily for kids with peanut allergies. Um, the gluten-free kids, I don't know if there's prepackaged things that we can find that are, that are gluten-free and just more of a daily variety that we might be able to serve these kids.
For sure. Yeah, I mean, we are always working to improve the selection that we have. We work with quite a lot of kids who have special dietary needs, and we are certainly happy to accommodate them. What it looks like in prepackaged form? Yeah, we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to see, you know. And the, the peanut allergy, for sure, will be a big consideration in the safety behind that and eating potentially in the classroom, you know, things like that. So we'll have to, we'll have to put our brains together. It's just, again, we're really just beginning the discussion. I know, like I said, on the distributor level, they're just kind of preparing for this massive influx. Like, what are we, what do we do? You know, they have to be prepared. So we, we are hoping that we are able to procure all of the things that we want to with, with just so many changes in such a short period of time.
Lindsay, I just wanted to say, on behalf of the rest of the board, thank you so much for everything you and the Food Service Department have done to feed our families in the district. I really, really appreciate it. I know how much work went into it. I know there were safety considerations. And, and, you know, in conjunction with that, I also want to thank all the families that were out there volunteering to drive meals to families. Yeah, and the families, the families that organized this and really helped our community during this time. And I just, I truly appreciate everything you did. I know you were really throwing a curveball, as we all were, and I appreciate how you rose to the occasion.
Thank you, thank you. And on behalf of, you know, our department, I think one of the silver linings was to just look around and see like, oh my gosh, there are so many people who want to help. They just, you know, they wanted to contribute. They wanted to help. They wanted to be there for people. They just, you know, they wanted to contribute, they wanted to help, they wanted to be there for people. And the people that participated were so gracious. You know, there wasn't, it was just an amazing kind of community experience in the midst of this craziness, you know, seeing how people responded when there was, you know, a really difficult situation, so.
Thank you so much. Ms. Phil Potter, you have another support service item?
I do, yes. We are being asked to approve the 2020, 2021 daily prices for lunch, breakfast, and morning care. As Lindsay mentioned, the prices are staying the same. Lunch will not have increased since the 2012, 2013 school year breakfast prices since 2013, 2014. And morning care will have remained the same for the past five years. So I move that item two under Support Services be added to the legislative meeting agenda.
I'll second that. Dee Spade.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. I'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Kozera.
Aye.
Mr. Little.
Aye.
Dr. Knowlish.
Aye.
Ms. Phil Pot.
Aye.
Mrs. Poniatowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Reed. Believe you're muted, Mrs. Reed. I'll unmute you.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Rennebeck.
Aye.
Mrs. Spade.
Yes.
And I also vote aye. Thank you, Ms. Phil Pot. We will now move on to education, which is me. Our first item is a request for the board to approve the SAP letter of agreement with Holy Family Institute per the attachment to Board Docs. Holy Family Institute agrees to designate a qualified liaison to provide student assistance program services to the district. The SAP liaison will act as an ad hoc member of the building's student assistance program core team. Holy Family will provide special education services for students referred by the district pursuant to an IEP developed jointly by the district, Holy Family, and the student's family. These services are provided as needed. This agreement will be effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, and the fees are dependent upon the services rendered. The next item is one that I am particularly excited about. This is a request for the board to award the bid for iPad cases to Sunset High Tech in the amount of $86,852.70. The new iPad cases that we are purchasing have a cover on them. I believe Dr. Manorino has a, has wanted to hold up and show us.
This is, it's actually really nice. It's a lot nicer than the ones we have. It's a much more rugged case with the corners reinforced, which is where we usually get most of the damage is when students drop the corners. And then it has a cover case, and the cover is much more, is stronger than obviously nothing, which is where we're having a lot of screens broken. So you can see how this is the new case that we'll be getting. It is a lot nicer than the one that we have now, which is just the simple rubber case. And so this is what we'll be purchasing for the students for the school year.
Great. I move that items one and two under education be added to the legislative meeting agenda.
I will second that, Dee Spade.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. I'll now take a roll call vote, Ms. Kozera.
Aye.
Mr. Little.
Aye.
Dr. Knowlish.
Aye.
Ms. Phil Pot.
Aye.
Mrs. Poniatowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennebeck.
Aye.
Mrs. Spade.
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Next, we will move on to Mrs. Poniatowski and athletics and activities. Okay, we have three items under athletics and activities tonight. The first is a request that the board approve the agreement with Allegheny Health Network Sports Medicine per the attached document in Board Docs. The North Hills School District requires sports medicine services for those whom are enrolled as students and are participating in athletics throughout the school year. The district provides such sports medicine services to our student athletes through contracted athletic trainers through the Allegheny Health Network. The agreement that we're putting through tonight is effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2025. The budget impact is $26,000 in 2020 with a 2% increase in each of the following years through the term of the agreement. The second item is a request for the board to approve the new Student Initiated Club, which is the National Spanish National Honor Society. This would be overseen by Ms. Laura Otte. She has volunteered to do this. This club's objective is to expand and enhance participation in the general Spanish club through a national honor society that would allow for enriched learning opportunities for highly motivated Spanish students who meet the society's requirements. This club will meet once a month or as needed in one of the Spanish classrooms during homeroom or after school. And there are no district monies that will be provided for this club, for the sponsor. And then the third item is another Student Initiated Club called Tabletop on the Hilltop. Dr. David Barkovich has agreed to volunteer to oversee this club. And this club, the purpose of it is to foster a positive community and create positive peer relationships around a common interest, which would be tabletop and role-playing games, as well as developing better communication and team-building skills via tabletop games. And again, with this club, there is no district monies that will be provided for the club or the sponsor. So I move that items one through three under athletics and activities be added to the legislative meeting agenda.
I'll second that, Dee Spade.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. I'll now take a roll call vote. Excuse me, Ms. Kozera.
Aye.
Mr. Little.
Aye.
Dr. Knowlish.
Aye.
Ms. Phil Pot.
Aye.
Mrs. Poniatowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennebeck.
Aye.
Mrs. Spade.
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. Thank you, Mrs. Poniatowski. Mrs. Rennebeck, do you have anything under AWBA? It doesn't look that way, but I just wanted to check.
Okay. Nothing at this time, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
There was enough class meetings, so we're good for now.
Then I'll move on to Personnel and Mrs. Spade.
Okay, personnel items are discussed in executive session. The superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approve personnel items one through four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is that Mrs. Reed?
Yep.
Thank you. I'll now take a roll call vote, Ms. Kozera.
Aye.
Mr. Little.
Aye.
Dr. Knowlish.
Aye.
Ms. Phil Pot.
Aye.
Mrs. Poniatowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennebeck.
Aye.
Mrs. Spade.
Yes.
And I will also vote aye. Thank you very much, Mrs. Spade. I'll now move on to Mr. Little and Community and Intergovernmental Relations.
Thank you, Madam President. We have one item action today to appoint the voting delegates for the PSBA, otherwise known as the Pennsylvania School Board Association, a delegate meeting for Saturday, November 7. So we talked about this at our last meeting and discussed. Also, as per the attached, you would see a little more outlining about the meeting. But just again, just to recap, that our district may appoint up to three members to serve as voting delegates, and that the board appoint Sandra Kozera, Allison Mathis, and Helen Spade to serve as voting delegates at the 2020 PSBA Delegate Assembly. So.
I will second that. Dee Spade. Sorry, I was taking a nap here.
That's okay. Is there any discussion?
Well, I guess I officially make the statement that I move.
He distracted me. Sorry, go ahead.
I move that the Board of Education approve Community Intergovernmental Relation item number one.
And I will second that, Dee Spade.
Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to point out that this is just the voting delegates to the conference, and any and all school board members can attend the conference, which I believe is planned virtually. So, you know, I guess we're kind of waiting for details on that, is that right, Mrs. Mathis? But, um, you know, we'd all be able to attend.
Yeah. Sorry, am I muted? Yeah, the, um, the SBA made a statement that all of their services, all of their webinars, conferences, et cetera, are probably going to be virtual and they will be free for members to attend for the next year. And you're freezing a little bit, but I believe that was your question.
Yes.
Yeah, so other board members are able to attend the session, the learning and discussion sessions. This is just for the voting of the delegates.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, thanks.
Sure. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to say that when we talk about the voting delegates and creating that platform for the PSBA, that I hope then, I'm full confidence in the people that will take theirs voting that will continue to fight for fair funding here for public school districts much like the North Hills. Dr. Manorino has made several comments that during this pandemic, we went virtual in a matter of days. And we did a pretty good job at it. You know, we talk about spending money and spending money, and we spent over a million dollars in funds to those institutions, and we did just as good a job by going virtual in a matter of days. So I hope we continue to fight for that, be able to keep that as dollars here to improve the education of our students.
Thank you. Do we have any other board comments? Going to move on to a roll call vote then, Ms. Kozera.
Aye.
Mr. Little.
Aye.
Dr. Knowlish.
Aye.
Ms. Phil Pot.
Aye.
Mrs. Poniatowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennebeck.
Aye.
Mrs. Spade.
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. Thank you, Mr. Little. It looks like we have nothing under policy, Ms. Kozera. Do you have a legislative update for us this evening?
I, I just wanted to mention that that Representative Adam Ray represents one of this state of Pennsylvania. Has, he was our representative, representative for, I don't know, about half of the North Hill School District. And he lost his bid for reelection in the primary this week. So we will be getting a new state representative. So I just wanted to thank Representative Raven Stahl. He's, you know, I know many of the board members have a, you know, he is their representative and they're, they're good friends with him, and he's done a lot for our district, and I hope we can continue the relationship with the new representative once elected. So, and I know that Adam Raven Stahl will continue to be a good person in the district because his, I believe his daughter's starting kindergarten at High Cliff in the fall. So we will certainly continue to see him around, but in a different capacity. So thank you to Adam Raven Stahl.
Thank you, Ms. Kozera. Did you have anything else under legislative before I move on?
No, sorry, that was it. Thank you.
No, no worries. Just wanted to check. I will hand it over to Dr. Knowlish for finance next.
Thank you. We do have a number of things to go over, so we're going to make up for the lack, the other folks that had very few items. The first three items we're going to talk about relate to the 2020, 2021 budget, and then the rest are standard operating items, either monthly or annually. So the first is item number one is Resolution 2020-02, and that is to set the tax millage to 18.65 mills. So this is the same millage rate for the current year, 2019 to 2020. So there's no tax increase in next year's budget. So we're very pleased to be able to, you know, do that, achieve that, and hope that that will help our families as well. Item number two is the Resolution 2020-03, which is the Homestead and Farmstead exclusion, and that authorizes the real estate tax assessment reduction for the taxpayers' primary residence. Item number three is the final budget itself, and this budget has one very significant difference from the proposed final budget that was presented on April 30th and then was available for public review and through the Public Budget Committee, which Mr. Muth helped the three meetings this past month. As we shared with you back in May, on May 21st, we did receive a grant from the Federal Cares Act for COVID-19 economic relief. And this grant allows us to keep our elementary class sizes within the current class size policy. So all elementary classes are within the policy based on what we know in current enrollment, and we also have the capacity to hire additional teachers over the summer if we should see any enrollment increases between now and the start of school. So the bottom line is that we are in a much better place with this final budget than we were with the proposed budget. So it's obviously a year that we're going to be keep, we're not doing many new things. We need to be very careful, but I think we're going to be very, we're going to be fine this year. And I think having that relief from the Cares Act is a great relief to all of us, knowing that we can keep those class sizes where we all want them to be. So the next group of items then are bills that we need to pay and some annual organizational items. Item number four are the general fund bills. Item number five are capital fund bills, which there's very little, there's just some little bit of paint and things that have to do with getting the middle, the middle school ready for the sixth grade. Now, item number six, food service fund bills. Item number seven are scholarship fund bills, and those, just since we don't often see that, I'll mention what they are. Those are scholarships that have been established through donations to the school district, either by individuals or by organizations. And we, the district administer them by granting the funds to the graduating seniors that have been chosen according to the criteria and the procedures that were established for the original donors. So those are something where we are just managing those scholarship funds and following the wishes of the donors. Item number eight are budget transfers. Item number nine is payroll for the month of May. Item number 10 appoints Mr. Muth as our treasurer for the 2021 year. We're required to appoint a treasurer annually as the, for the new fiscal year. So even though we just appointed him in December, when Mr. Hall retired, we need to reappoint him now. The December appointment was just from January through now, you know, June 30th. So now this will start with July 1st. Item number 11 are the renewals for our general insurance and our workers' compensation insurance. For generals insurance, the premium increase is 3%. And for workers' compensation, there's actually a slight decrease in the premium. So those are very good numbers, and thank you, Mr. Ruth, for your good work in getting very competitive numbers that that help with our budget tremendously. The last item is item number 12, and that sets our facility's usage fee for 2020 to 2021. Do this annually every June. And the recommendation is to keep most rental rates flat, so the same amount as 2019 to 2020. The only exception is the rental rate for the auditorium, which we're recommending be raised to $1,300 per event. That's a $100 increase. It's still very competitive with other large capacity rooms, you know, in the area. And it helps us meet our overall goal with these rates, which is basically to make sure that we break even. We have great facilities, you know, when we're allowed to use them, we want our community to be able to participate and to make it possible for organizations to use them. But at the same time, we just need to make sure that there's not a negative impact on our own budget and on our taxpayers. So that's the logic behind the proposed fee rates. So with all that being said, the superintendent recommends an ISO move that items number one through 12 be added to the legislative meeting agenda.
And I will second that, Dee Spade.
Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Mrs. Reed.
Number one, and I may have missed it. Whenever you made reference to the fact we received the money in regard to, you know, the COVID ID, COVID-19, that this class, would make the classrooms remain the same. Now, are we still going to be hiring a teacher for High Cliff first grade? Is that in the budget?
Yes, they, all of this.
That's in the budget. The, we have, we received 315 applications for that position, and
That's in the budget. The, we have, we received 315 applications for that position and the second grade position at McIntyre. We sent out 76 opportunities for first-round interviews this week. Those are due back to the administration team this Sunday as we begin the first round of the process. So yes, those are the two positions that we are in the process of hiring right now.
Okay, good. And another question I had, and I could be wrong on this, excuse me if I am, the Homestead Act. We don't have a number to that yet. That's, isn't that based on the money that come in through the casinos? That we get, that we get, that's applied to the Homestead Act?
Kathy, the amount that we receive is determined by the state. It does represent the gaming funds. That allocation has been funded, and that is where the $125.92 reduction on the individual taxpayer bill.
Is that what we're getting, 125?
Yes.
I didn't hear that. Okay. I'm sorry.
That's fine. There's a lot of information here, so it's.
There was another question. I can't think of what it was. Oh, you don't need anymore.
Any other discussion or questions?
I had just something really quickly. I don't know if Mr. Muth or Dr. Nolish would be the best to answer. I was able to attend one of the Public Finance Committee meetings, and I was, you know, I, you know, was very informative. And I wondered how the, the meetings went generally and if you got some good feedback from the public. You know, since I know we often, when people have questions about the budget, we tell them to come to this meeting, so I like to hope that they do for sure.
Mr. Muth, why don't you, you have the bird's eye view of everything?
I don't, I'm probably a bad read on those meetings because it was kind of one-sided. I think the Zoom format does not favor the taxpayer that are participating in those meetings. It's a lot easier for me to sit back and just talk. The interaction that you miss, topic by topic, I think, is lost in that. So I look forward to having those meetings in public next year.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, I would add, there were.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, there were a lot of good questions asked and answered, and I think hopefully increased everybody's understanding. But I, again, I would second what Mr. Muth said. It's always better to do those in person when we can.
Right. I agree. And whenever we sat at the table, we knew who was there. With this Zoom, we don't. We don't know who's in the room with us. And nobody would know we're there unless we ask a question.
And Sandy, I shared, I shared this with Jerry, but there were, there were definitely comments saying how great of a job he did, that he took something that was a really complicated topic, made it, you know, very easy to understand. So people really thought he did a great job. You did a great job, Jerry.
Yeah, thanks very much. We appreciate your time. I know all of us do, that, that you spend on, on educating everybody about the budget. That's really well. That's great.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Muth.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? No. Okay, I will then take a roll call vote. Ms. Kozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Dr. Nolish?
Aye.
Ms. Phil Pot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. Thank you very much, Dr. Nolish. I'd now like to ask if any members of the public have any comments on non-agenda items. Please raise your hand, and I will bring you up to speak. And if there are any people, I will then read our public participation policy. Okay, it looks like we have one person, so I'm going to go ahead and quickly read our public participation policy. We would like to invite any resident taxpayer or employee of the North Hills School District who wishes to address the board to come forward at this time. The board does reserve the right to limit the amount of time allotted for public discussion of any particular speakers and/or issues. Some of your questions can be quickly addressed following your comments, while others may require more research and discussion. When appropriate, you are welcome to further discuss your concerns with us following the meeting. We appreciate your interest. And I will be asking people to state their name and address for the record. First, it looks like we have Jennifer Duffy, so I'm going to bring her up to speak. Hi, Mrs. Duffy. It looks like you're muted. If you want to go ahead and unmute yourself and state your address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Hi, how are you?
I'm well. This is Jennifer Duffy, 16 East Orchard Avenue, 15202.
Thank you, Mrs. Duffy. Go ahead.
I just have a quick question. With Allegheny County going green tomorrow, what is the status of the school district's grounds and fields, particularly the tracks? Will everything be open tomorrow? Will sports be allowed to resume with the school district, you know, starting July 1st?
I caught pieces of that because my internet is unstable here as well. I believe you're asking about the track and the athletic fields. Did I catch those pieces? The track, we are opening the track. As long as people maintain social distancing, the track will be open. As far as the athletic fields are concerned, the way, the way the rules state right now, the PIAA has closed all school districts until July 1. So there should be no activities of athletics taking place on our fields until at least July 1. Now, that was a statement that was made in April, and as a member of the PIAA Board, the PIAA is waiting for information from the governor's office as to when athletes can resume any type of activities on school district properties while the governor puts the different counties into different phases. So as of right now, although we are green, by order of the PIAA, there is to be no athletic activities on our fields until July 1. But I was hoping that that statement would change this week, and nothing has come out of Dr. Lombardi's office at this time. But as soon as he gives us some direction about what we can do for athletics, we will be sure to let our public know. As far as outside organizations, our school facilities will be closed to outside organizations this summer. But the tracks will be open. The tracks actually are open. If you wanted to go there now, you're more than welcome to, to go to the tracks and, and use both the tracks at Martorelli and at Ross.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Duffy. Is there anything else? No, it looks like you muted yourself. I'm going to remove you, and then I'll bring up our next guest. Hi, Mr. Vesely, if you don't mind unmuting yourself and then please stating your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name's Ed Vesely. I live at 116 Lingate Drive. Actually, Jennifer asked the question, and Dr. Manarino answered it. That was my one question. So I'm going to move on to one other comment. Jerry, I want to thank you for running those public budget meetings. I think you did a tremendous job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vesely. Okay, it doesn't look like we have any other public comments at this time, so I would like to announce that the next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Thursday, June 11th, 2020, at 7:15 PM via Zoom. We also have a board meeting scheduled for July, and we are hoping to be able to go back to holding meetings in person by then. So, so keep an eye out from the district for information on that. And there being no other items on the agenda this evening, I would move to adjourn the meeting.
That goes.
Thank you.